All right. Call the pledge, hearings from citizens don't have that CEO Star Wars, so they'll get us straight to chair update. Okay, I was thinking I'd have more time. Got to figure out what I'm going to say.
It's getting started whenever you know we have 10 minutes.
Great, thank you very much. All right, it's after nine, looks like we have everybody here, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Sorda Board together, January 2025. All right, we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any buddy on my sheet for public comments, but we always do welcome public comments. Is there anyone who wasn't able to sign up? If so, just approach the podium. All right, hearing none, let's move on through the agenda. We have some very exciting awards, but we're going to put those off. I think a lot of people at this table encountered some of the traffic this morning, and so we have some people who will ride for those awards. We'll do them whenever is the right time, which I think pushes us through to the chair update, and then we'll do committee reports. This is a, this is a hard chair update, I'm going to admit. So in some ways, I feel like I failed you because for months I've been trying to convince Daryl not to retire. And he laughs at me every time I do, but I think everybody respects the work you've done here. I keep reading 19 years, but I think I'm going to say 30 years because you put in a lot of double days and it's a massive amount of work that you've done. And the transformation of Sorda over your 10 years, nothing short of staggering, right? The levy, reinventing Metro, huge structural and strategic elements, but also very small details that handled so beautifully in every aspect of the organization. The culture, amazing. Everybody's happy to be here, and I think that's a big part of what you've done. So top to bottom, advanced this organization in amazing ways. So we're going to have a few more months to celebrate you, to give reminiscences of your time, try and convince you to stay. But also, we will have to move on to, so I do want to note that we have selected an executive search firm. We will not be voting on it today. I think I told you that, that we would have that as an item. That's not happening because it's not going to rise to the level that requires a board vote. So we'll be moving forward with that and working on, although I hate to say it, finding a new CEO. But Daryl, you are absolutely amazing leader. You've done so much for this organization, and I think your influence will push the organization forward for probably 19, 30, 40 years forward. Thank you so much, and this won't be the last time we applaud you, but definitely going to do it right now.
If you, if you know me, you know I have to say something.
Yes.
I started working seven days a week when I was 12 years old. It's time for me to sit down. Daryl is tired, and it's the only reason that I am retiring, because it is, it is time for me to sit down. I've had two amazing careers. I had a 28-year career in medical supply distribution and 19 years here. And by far, the group of people that I've had to work with, including the board, every employee in this organization, the leadership of this organization, how we're all in the same boat, rowing in the same direction for the good of our community, it has absolutely been amazing. And I really appreciate the kind words, but it's, it's not me. It's this group of individuals that decided to do the right thing every single solitary day, and every day put their jobs on the line, and every day fight really hard for our community. It's not me, it's this group of individuals that we call Metro. They are amazing. This is an amazing group of people, employees, that care about the work that we do. So although this work was hard, it was relatively easy because of the people that work here.
It's fabulous. I love it. So we will celebrate Daryl early, often, over the next few months. For now, let's go through our committee meetings. Finance, you can see my name next to it, relatively simple meeting, couple things to note, and then we will go over to finances later. We've been building an internal audit function over the past couple of years. They handled the risk evaluation process, is that the right wording, for the first time, and if you didn't go over those committee meeting notes, I think it is very, very worthwhile seeing what the results are and the roadmap for that internal audit function. Oh, I'm not talking to the mic well enough, my apologies. My mic went off. That we got 1.5 million back, I don't know if back is the right word, as an adjustment due to the sales tax holiday, and that was a welcome revelation in December. So those were the two biggest things out of that meeting. No action items, so I'm going to pass it on to planning and ops, Mr. Drehouse.
Okay, Mr. Etheridge, thank you.
Sorry to stop, we have to proof the minutes.
Oh, details.
I got caught up in comments about Daryl, my apologies. I hope you've all read the minutes. Any comments, concerns, adjustments? Hearing none, I could entertain a motion to pass the minutes.
Move.
All right, thank you very much, Tony. A second, seconded by Ms. Sheets. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say left. Any extensions? The minutes are approved. Natalie, thank you so much for keeping us on task. Mr. Drehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. You know, our action, well, thanks for turning over the microphone, I appreciate it, and we had a great committee meeting, planning and ops. We discussed quite a bit, a lot of metrics that we did well on, performed well on this year. We do think there might be some headwinds in January coming up, based on a couple difficult days with the snow, which are, some of that's not avoidable, so most of it's not avoidable. So, so the KPIs in January will maybe throw us for a loop a little bit, but we'll always have that asterisk in there going forward so we know. Mr. Sproul helped us through the meeting along with the team. We had a lot of good news to share. Sounds like we're going to share some of the awards after my committee, right? The action items, we voted to put them on the consent agenda, therefore, there's not a need to separately go through each of them unless anyone chooses to pull something off of consent. Okay, so the consent items, hopefully, I know we talked about them during committee, and those of you that weren't in committee, hopefully you had time to look at the consent items, entertain a motion to approve the consent items as proposed. Mr. Metz makes a motion, seconded by Tony. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you for approving the consent agenda, and I'll turn the microphone back over to Blake.
Thank you very much. Planning and Ops, always amazing meeting and some interesting action items coming out of that. Infrastructure, bike and row is next, Ms. Sheets.
Thank you so much. We also had a great meeting. It started with a presentation from Hallett and Jason on just an annual report of the MTIF program, and it's in everyone's packet, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at some, the great variety of photographs that are in the presentation. Through this program, we've been able to make a significant number of impacts throughout the community, everything from street resurfacing to crosswalk improvements, removal of slip lanes, so many different things to make our communities more accessible all over Hamilton County. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that presentation, please do. On our, part of our work today is to approve some guideline changes that were presented to the committee, and I'll turn it over to Hallett to say a few words, but I just want to preface this by saying that these guideline change recommendations came out of several different engagement opportunities. In October, all of the jurisdictions were invited to share their experiences with us, and there was a meeting up in Clifton where the jurisdictions came and were able to say what is working with the program, what they would like to see improved. So we took that feedback. There were multiple meetings with the jurisdictions, we took consultant feedback, staff feedback as well. And so the four, four recommendations in your packet are on slide 27, if you want to look at them, and let's see, Hallett, would you like to go through them, or?
I mean, I'll be happy to do that if, if you want me to.
Okay, sure.
Yes, all right. So slide 27, please. Yeah, and thank you, Sarah, for, for that intro, and, and this is something, you know, we start, I mean, we started this program four years ago, once the levy passed, and per the guidelines, every year we have the opportunity to come to the board and, you know, recommend some adjustment to the guidelines, just to make some tweaks and improve the program as, you know, as a whole. And, you know, it's, it's a learning experience, and as Ms. Sheets explained, we've been gathering input from the jurisdictions throughout the year. We did have a meeting, we called all the jurisdictions to attend in October, many of them did attend, Ms. Sheets was, was there as well, just to, again, you know, understand from them, you know, what kind of, you know, their feeling about the program, some of the concerns that they may have, some changes that they want to see to the program, that we can accommodate, and so on. So we took all of that, and, you know, we discussed that at the subcommittee meeting last week, and we're bringing this to you today. Basically, just to summarize, one of the concerns that many of the jurisdictions had with the existing guidelines is we only give them one year. From the time they signed the, the contract with us, they have 12 months to start construction. Many thought that 12 months is not really enough, and they would like to see it to be 18 months, a year and a half. And, you know, we thought this really makes sense, it helps them, it relieves, you know, some of the pressure on some of these jurisdictions. So that's, you know, the first recommendation is to change the guidelines from 12 months to 18 months, giving the jurisdictions a little bit more time to start their projects. The second bullet is, again, right now, almost everything is, you know, done on paper, they submit their proposals, you know, in printed format, and quite a bit of the other communication is, you know, via email, you know, forms and so on, but still, there's quite a bit of paperwork. The recommendation was to invest in an online digital tool, so that everything is submitted, you know, online, digitally, and we thought this is a great idea. It not only saves, you know, trees, but also makes it more efficient for everybody. So that's one of the recommendations, is to invest in an online digital tool for this program. One of the, the, one of the criterion, the, one of the criteria in the guidelines is the economic growth, which not too many jurisdictions have been taking advantage of over the past four years for different reasons, and so it hasn't been used much. On the other hand, we've noticed in the past few years, especially in the past year or two, that there are some projects that would have probably scored differently had we taken into consideration the community impact that these projects may have, such as, you know, adding sidewalks that would connect certain areas to, you know, parks, to schools, to other critical facilities, in addition to, you know, other facilities as well. And we thought that maybe adding that component to the existing economic growth criteria, you know, add the community impact to that, would make that criterion as a whole a much better criterion that, you know, jurisdictions would benefit from, from that score. So the recommendation is to add the community impact component to the existing economic growth criteria. And we did, you know, some calculations, and we thought that, yes, that would really benefit the program as, as a whole. Next slide, please. The, yep, no, no, you're good, oh, thank you. All right, and the, the final recommendation is, it's kind of like, more of a bigger adjustment to the guidelines. Right, right now, when we created the program, there was only one bucket of, you know, funds. So all jurisdictions would submit all their projects, whether they're asking, you know, for $200,000 or for $10 million, and it's a single application, and then all projects are, you know, reviewed, scored, and ranked, and then we start, you know, awarding the, the money, starting from the top-ranked project. What we've noticed over the past few years is there is really a big split in the kind of projects that we receive. Based on the four-year data, about two-thirds of the, of the projects are what we call large requests, meaning over a million dollars, and about a third or so are small requests, projects that are only asking for $200,000, $600,000, $500,000, and so on. And the current setup, although it worked fine the first few years, now that there's more competition, we believe that many jurisdictions would benefit if we create, you know, a large, a large ask projects, you know, pro, sub-program, and a small ask projects sub-program, just from looking at the history and the split between these different projects. So what we're recommending is to, instead of having one bucket of funds, split that into large projects and small projects, and, and the split is at a million dollars. So any request that's under a million, that will be a small request, and if, any project requesting more than a million, that'd be a big, a big project. We did apply this new criteria, this new guideline to year four, this past year, and to see what impact it would have had on the awards. And based on the existing guidelines, the current guidelines, we awarded nine projects to seven jurisdictions. So this is what the board approved a couple of months ago, you know, to fund nine projects from seven jurisdictions. Applying the new proposed split between big projects, small projects, with the same amount of money, looking at this past year, we would have been able to award 17 projects from 14 different jurisdictions. So the benefit is there, we're still, you know, funding quite, you know, almost double the number of projects, but equally important is we're giving money to more jurisdictions. 14 jurisdictions would have benefited from that versus the seven. We, the staff, you know, we think that creating this large and small programs or subprograms would be of great value to the community.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Are there any questions about any of these proposed changes? Thank you. So I'd love to entertain a motion to accept these changes to the MTIF guidelines. Chelsea, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Cola. All right, all in favor of making these four changes to the MTIF guidelines?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Right.
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Mr. Etheridge.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Gibson? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
And Ms. Sheets?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And I apologize, we're going to have to go back to the, the consent, consent agenda, we did not take a roll call, so we do need to, to go back, sorry about that, everyone.
On my piece.
So if we can do a real, roll call for that, Pete motions and Mr. Bryce.
Let's, let's wrap infrastructure, and then we'll go right back to that, okay?
Yeah, so I think that's it for our committee. The application for this round will go out in March, is that right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, good. All right, well, we look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your hard work, in addition to the team, Jason, who worked on this over the past several months. Your initiative and drive on leading the committee has really been outstanding, thank you so much. All right, we have to go back for planning and ops and do a roll call. I think the motion is out there and seconded, so we could go straight to the roll call.
Sorry about that, everybody. Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
And Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Thank you, Natalie. Continuing jumping around in the agenda, let's jump back to the CEO Star Awards. Mr. Haley.
It's the one thing that I enjoy doing more than anything else in this job, is recognizing amazing people, and I've got some very amazing people to recognize today. We all know what a challenge COVID brought to this organization, the civil unrest brought to this organization, and I'm going to do something a little different today. Our union officials, the leadership of the union that represent most of our employees, they've been in that boat with us, rowing in the same direction. They really care about this community, they really care about the organization and the people in this organization. I, I don't know that we've ever recognized our union leadership, but today what I want to do is I want to ask Frank Harper, the president and business agent, to stand. I'd like to ask James Henderson, the vice president, to stand. I'd like to ask Inga McLaughlin, our financial secretary and treasurer, to stand, and Chuck Hurd, the recording secretary, isn't here. I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the staff here and on behalf of the community for always, always being there to help us deliver the service that we deliver. You all are amazing leaders. You're amazing, and the difference that you have made in this organization, to this organization, for this organization, so we can deliver a service to our community is second to none. So from the bottom of my heart, I really want to thank each and every one of you for everything you've done for this organization, and right now, I'd like you all to come up and receive.
Correct. Okay, good. All right, well, we look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all your hard work, in addition to the team, Jason, who worked on this over the past several months. Your initiative and drive on leading the committee has really been outstanding. Thank you so much. All right. We have to go back for Planning and Ops and do a roll call. I think the motion is out there and seconded, so we could go straight to the roll call.
Sorry about that, everybody. Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
And Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And I apologize, we're gonna have to go back to the consent agenda. We did not take a roll call, so we do need to, to go back. Sorry about that, everyone.
On my piece.
So if we can do a roll, roll call for that, Pete motions and Mr. Bryce.
Let's, let's wrap infrastructure and then we'll go right back to that. Okay?
Yeah, so I think that's it for our committee. The application for this round will go out in March, is that right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, good. All right, well, we look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all your hard work, in addition to the team, Jason, who worked on this over the past several months. Your initiative and drive on leading the committee has really been outstanding. Thank you so much. All right. We have to go back for Planning and Ops and do a roll call. I think the motion is out there and seconded, so we could go straight to the roll call.
Sorry about that, everybody. Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
And Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And I apologize, we're gonna have to go back to the consent agenda. We did not take a roll call, so we do need to, to go back. Sorry about that, everyone.
On my piece.
So if we can do a roll, roll call for that, Pete motions and Mr. Bryce.
Let's, let's wrap infrastructure and then we'll go right back to that. Okay?
Yeah, so I think that's it for our committee. The application for this round will go out in March, is that right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, good. All right, well, we look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all your hard work, in addition to the team, Jason, who worked on this over the past several months. Your initiative and drive on leading the committee has really been outstanding. Thank you so much. All right. We have to go back for Planning and Ops and do a roll call. I think the motion is out there and seconded, so we could go straight to the roll call.
Sorry about that, everybody. Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
And Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And I apologize, we're gonna have to go back to the consent agenda. We did not take a roll call, so we do need to, to go back. Sorry about that, everyone.
On my piece.
So if we can do a roll, roll call for that, Pete motions and Mr. Bryce.
Let's, let's wrap infrastructure and then we'll go right back to that. Okay? Just thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you. You and James can say something if you want.
Frank said it.
You can never follow a friend.
Yeah. Just the three. Appreciate you guys, man. Thank you guys.
Do you have you stand up? Appreciate you. One more photo here.
Oh, all right. James?
Oh. Oh, one more. Oh, they want pictures.
Always more pictures.
I wanna see what's at the bottom.
Chelsea, I do too.
I do too.
Oh, wow.
Oh, so nice.
Oh, yeah, this is nice. This is nice. Thank you. This is nice.
Picture, picture.
Picture, oh, they want that picture.
We like pictures. Hold up your stuff.
Wait a minute.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this for me.
That was great. And I think pulling out the stars, because they are stars, was a great idea. Thank you so much. All right, so where are we in the agenda?
Financial results.
Or?
Governance.
Mr. Drehouse, governance and nominating committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Frank, I want you to know, KZ wasn't able to make it today, but it's good to have another pastor in the house.
So, and in all seriousness, we talk a lot about KPIs, but to be a provider of choice
in many ways is important, and we all talk about that quite a bit, but it's hard to do that and also be the employer. You can't do it without being the employer of choice in the community. And so thank you all, not just Frank, but James, Inga, Bill, John, Adrian, Daryl, and the whole executive team. So really great to celebrate that with you. So thanks for coming down. Okay, on to governance. So thanks to all of us, all the people on the board for serving on the board. Every year, we have to select our leadership, our chair and vice chair of the board. We share appointments from, from the city and the county, and we, we elect two people to represent us and work with the staff to develop our agendas and go through the committee structure and everything together. Craig C. was our previous chair prior to Blake Etheridge was our prior chair, and Blake was nominated and voted on unanimously to take that role of chair. Ms. Robinson, Gwen Robinson, was nominated and unanimously approved to be the vice chair. So we, I had the pleasure of serving as the chair of the nominating committee this year, and the people on the committee are Ms. Sheets, Mr. Metz, Mr. Kelly, Pastor Smith, and myself. And we deliberated and would like to put forth to the board a nomination to support the term, upcoming term for chair of Mr. Blake Etheridge and Ms. Gwen Robinson. So before we go forward with a vote, and this is why we abbreviated the Planning and Ops meeting, I wanted to say a couple of things about Mr. Etheridge and Ms. Robinson to give you a sense of who we're nominating. So Blake has served as our board chair, as you know. He was a director, is director of operations of VRI, provider of remote patient monitoring. But prior to that, he was in management and leadership roles at First Transit. And his background in Transit is really helpful to all of us, and particularly the leadership employed by Metro and Sorta, to support the leaders that exist in, in the room, to help us move our mission forward. So Blake is a great ambassador for Transit. He had, he was the director of data analytics and operations support. His degrees are multiple. He had a BA in chemistry from Goucher? Goucher, okay. Goucher College. And his MA is in political science from John Hopkins, John Hopkins University. So he had the technical background as well as the political wherewithal in his master's degree. So Blake, we're thankful for your leadership, filling in when Craig needed to step down, and we'd like to support your leadership going forward. Before we vote on Blake, I wanted to mention some things about Ms. Robinson. I think everybody here knows Gwen and has known her for a long, long time in, in many, many roles. She has been a great ambassador for Metro and really the community at large. She served the Community Action Agency since 1995. She served in the role as the president and CEO of CAA. She was a co-founder of Every Child Succeeds. She sits, has sat at one point and may sit now on the Hawksworth Advisory Board, Downtown Cincinnati, Inc., DCI, the Library Foundation Board, the Public Benefits Board of the State of Ohio, an important role that sometimes doesn't get recognized. The third CRA Board. She was the first African-American nominated and voted as president of Cincinnati's Association, an important role of civic leaders in this community. She's received a lot of awards. In 2010, she received the Profiles in Courage Award. 2006, she was named Cincinnati Enquirer Woman of the Year, Leading Woman of the Year by the YWCA. Ladies of Distinction in 2007. She was an honorary at the NAACP. 2006, Right Over Street Award, if I said that properly, is the award at the NA, by the NAACP. Radio One Woman of Empowerment Award and the Dadcap Rafiki Award. So she was nominated and has sat on the board since 2012 and has served admirably in that role, and we'd love to have her again as the vice chair. So that concludes my report on behalf of the nominating committee, and I'll put forth a motion to approve the, we have to do a roll call. Natalie, thank you for organizing us, not just today, but leading up to our meeting. So I know in our minutes, we have to do a roll call vote. It did say that we have to vote on them separately in the, in the minutes, but I'll enter, before we vote on that, we have to ask if there are other nominations for these two roles. So I'll ask, are there any nominations for the role of chair? Any other nominations for the role of vice chair? Okay. Now, the nominations put forth are Mr. Etheridge and Ms. Robinson. My question, Kim, is can we do them both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Because there are no other nominations, we can do a roll call vote for both Mr. Etheridge and Ms. Robinson.
Need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Chelsea seconds. Sorry she beat you, Neil. But, but, okay, there's a motion and a second. Natalie, can you go through the roll?
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
And Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And I apologize, we're gonna have to go back to the consent agenda. We did not take a roll call, so we do need to, to go back. Sorry about that, everyone.
On my piece.
So if we can do a roll, roll call for that, Pete motions and Mr. Bryce.
Let's, let's wrap infrastructure and then we'll go right back to that. Okay? Yeah, so I think that's it for our committee. The application for this round will go out in March, is that right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, good. All right, well, we look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. And we have Metro on the move. Mr. Haley?
I am happy to announce that Metro received an EPA grant for $4.8 million to replace eight 2013 model buses, and these will be replaced with eight new diesel-electric hybrid-powered vehicles. Also coming up, February 9th through 15th, is Ohio Love Transit Week, and we will be celebrating the week, from the 9th through the 15th. We will be down on Government Square on February 11th, thanking customers, thanking our customers. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
holiday in August that came our way on December twenty-fourth. And we also closed it with two months worth of, worth of data from the state of Ohio. Historically, we've closed this with three months trailing. We closed this month with uh only two months trailing. Um, the other items that contributed to this positive variance were the CPS passes uh along with some ODOT, ODOT preventive maintenance. And the final item was, um, as we've seen throughout the year, the investment income. Uh, jumping down to the total expenses, uh, they came in about fourteen point two million dollars and that, that was a negative variance uh for the month. And that was broken down to, we accrued the access um, um, back pay in December along with the, we had a cycle count adjustment that contributed to this deficiency in the expenses. And then the final item, we just had just some added spend that's been trailing throughout the year. And when you look down at the bottom, that came, came up for the month of a two point nine million dollar operating capital contribution. But really I want to focus everyone's attention to the, to the right column. And you can see for the year, we ended with um about three point six million dollars of operating capital contribution, which exceeded our budget by almost one point three million dollars. And why I really want to point this out to everyone is if you look at the county sales tax line, we, we kind of missed that during the year compared to budget by almost five million dollars. Yet we had a positive variance to the budget on the operating, operating capital contribution of, of one point two million dollars, one point three million dollars. So, you know, breaking that down, Metro simply just outperformed the budget excluding the sales tax. So looking at the things that are our, in our control by over six million dollars, which is a very impressive feat for everyone at Metro. So I'm, I think we're all proud of uh the work that was done throughout the year and we're keeping a close eye on all these. But uh, once, once again, a great month and that contributed to uh an ending to a wonderful year. Uh, are there any questions from anyone? Yes, sir.
Uh, I have one. Uh, I'm a numbers person too. I ran a trucking company for years. When we have an excess, like you said, what, six million dollars? Do we have a provision that we can take that money and invest that so we can draw money off that to add and for case we run into a, a flat period or something of that nature?
Yeah, the, the, the operating capital contribution that we're talking about, that is invested. So we, we, we do invest. It's part, it's not separated, it's not restricted. It's part of our, our operating funds and those are invested and we, we have an investment policy that we follow. And right now we have close to a hundred and sixty million dollars um that we have invested in the operating fund. So we, yes, we do. All right. Yeah, the return, we, we've been, it's been trending down a little bit, but right now we're earning, call it four point four percent on our investments on both the, the operating fund and the infrastructure fund, which was, it contributed to our positive um variance for the year.
Now, is that money? Excuse me, can I ask you another question? Let's just, let's just say for the fund, you made ten million dollars, okay? Is that your mark for anything specific or you just keep it in a specific fund?
It, it's not earmarked specifically, other than each and every year, we need between six and ten million dollars of, of surplus here, operating capital contribution for our, our fleet to, to contribute to our, our investment of our fleet. So while it's not separated or restricted, it's commingled, we look at this and say, we need to have between a six and ten million dollars a year um to help fund the, the capital contributions and capital expenses for our buses. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Um, and we have Metro on the move. Mr. Haley.
I am happy to announce that uh Metro received an EPA grant for four point eight million dollars to replace eight twenty thirteen model buses and these will be replaced with eight new diesel electric hybrid powered vehicles. Also coming up, February ninth through fifteenth is Ohio Love Transit Week and we will be celebrating uh the week, uh, from the ninth through the fifteenth. Uh, we will be down on Government Square on February eleventh, thanking customers, thanking our operators for their service. Any of the board members that would like to join us, we'd love to have you. Um, Blake is usually there every year. Um, we'll send an email out to the board letting you know the times that we'll be down on Government Square. And we'll also be visiting several of our state representatives and senators to highlight the impact of the work that we do here in southwest Ohio. Also, congratulations uh to the organization uh for winning another award from Visit Cincinnati and it is the Horace Suddeth Progressive Business Award and it is for all of our inclusion in our procurement and our DEI work here within the organization. Uh, so congratulations to the organization for winning another award. Um, BRT, we know what's coming. Uh, there is a list of dates here, February twenty-fourth, February twenty-fifth and February twenty-sixth. It's an outreach to the community as we continue to get uh feedback from our community about the upcoming BRT. And last, uh, but not least, we will be testing out in February a few articulated vehicles uh for our BRT. Uh, we'll make sure that the, the board knows when those vehicles will be here. Um, so you get an opportunity to see them. The uh, community will get an opportunity to see them. Um, we're gonna take these vehicles, we're gonna turn the air conditioning on, we're gonna run them up hills to make sure that they work in our community for our BRT before we actually buy vehicles. Um, so they'll be here for a couple of weeks and we're gonna run them through the, uh, through all the tests to make sure they will um live up to the expectation of our vehicles. So we'll also send an email out to the board and let them know when those are here. And again, the board an opportunity to see them, give the community an opportunity to see them and give us an opportunity to make sure um that they will fit our needs come BRT time. Um, and last but not least, um, we did just end twenty twenty-four. Uh, we had a very successful twenty twenty-four. So thank you to everyone on the board and all of Metro employees and our community for the support. And what we'd like to do at this time is show a video of the review of nineteen, of twenty twenty-four.
Almost went back.
It was a busy year for Metro. As we continue to deliver on the promises of issue seven, Metro is moving Hamilton County forward with more frequency, expanded service, increased reliability, enhanced infrastructure and better mobility for all. Transportation is what we do, but people are our priority. In twenty twenty-four, we provided thirteen point six million trips to customers across Hamilton County, increasing our ridership by thirty percent over the past two years. All of this has resulted in Metro leading the nation in post pandemic ridership recovery at one hundred seventeen percent. In twenty twenty-four, we launched the long awaited Route sixty-one connecting Mount Airy with Madeira seven days a week. We also launched our new crosstown Route thirty-six, connecting Mount St. Joseph University, Price Hill, Uptown and Norwood while expanding service and accessibility to Cincinnati Children's Hospital. Other routes across the region have also been enhanced to address specific community needs. Metro's innovative on-demand service, Metro Now, continue to grow in both ridership and footprint. In twenty twenty-four, the two zones expanded to include key destinations such as the Forest Park Kroger, the Colrain Senior Center and other vital locations. Ridership has consistently increased month over month. Notably, many customers rely on Metro Now to access essential services, underscoring its critical role in meeting community needs with more than eighty-four thousand trips provided in twenty twenty-four. Also, thanks to issue seven, in February, we celebrated the third round of Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund Grants with a signing ceremony. In this round of grants, we're thrilled to have provided forty-two million dollars supporting twenty-nine projects across twenty municipalities within Hamilton County. Since twenty twenty-one, Metro has allocated more than three hundred million in funds to bolster transit-related infrastructure projects across Hamilton County. We also provided bear-free rides for the return of Blink. Thanks to efforts by Metro staff, we provided over one hundred eighty-five thousand rides during the four-day festival, a twenty percent increase from the previous Blink. The public engagement didn't stop there. We participated in numerous community engagement opportunities to get feedback on bus rapid transit, which is poised to become the most revolutionary service in Metro's history. Throughout twenty twenty-four, we attended more than one hundred community events and hosted multiple public meetings, resulting in us receiving feedback from thousands of residents on this transformational project. All of these improvements made by the reinventing Metro Plan are more than just lines on a map. At Metro, we believe that the success of our region depends on the strength of the partnerships we build. We prioritize creating opportunities for diverse businesses across our region by investing more than twenty million dollars in contracts with women-owned, minority-owned and other disadvantaged businesses. We also established new business partnerships with Cincinnati Children's Hospital, the Hamilton County and Cincinnati Public Library, and we were happy to strengthen our partnerships with the University of Cincinnati and Cincinnati State while also welcoming Xavier University to our university partner program, providing free rides to students and staff for the fall semester. We continue to upgrade amenities with the installation of more benches and shelters and in partnership with UC DAP, we've redesigned our bus stop signs for a better customer experience. With designs finalized, installation of over four thousand signs will begin in twenty twenty-five. All of this wouldn't happen without the exceptional Metro team. The hard work and dedication of our amazing operators, maintenance workers and staff have positioned Metro as one of the nation's leading transit agencies. In March, we celebrated these achievements with the third Golden Bus Awards, recognizing dozens of individuals for their commitment to our organization. Then in June, we celebrated hundreds of Metro employees for their excellence and commitment to safety. A total five hundred thirty team members were recognized for their outstanding safety performance, with sixty-nine receiving awards for reaching significant safety milestones. All this hard work didn't go unnoticed. The Metro team continues to take home multiple awards and recognition. Highlighting Metro's commitment to the community and its team members, Metro was honored with the All About Women Best Places to Work Award in the Women of Color category. Metro was also awarded the Transit System of the Year Award. Darryl Haley, Metro's CEO, was honored with the NAACP Game Changer Award and was the recipient of the prestigious Men of Honor Award. Additionally, seven Metro leaders also received industry and national awards. And that's just a sample of the many awards and recognitions received by the Metro team. It's truly a lot to celebrate. We proudly touted those achievements at the twenty twenty-four State of Metro Luncheon. This year, we were honored to welcome distinguished guests, including US Representative Greg Landsman, APTA President Paul Scutellus, Cincinnati Mayor Aftab Purival and Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese. Each of them echoed a powerful and unified message. Metro is fulfilling its promise to the community by building a transformational transit system that is better connecting our region, both today and for generations to come. Finally, with all of the enhancements to our service through the Reinventing Metro Plan, it was time for a new look. In January, we unveiled our brand and tagline, Metro, Your Way to Go. This fresh new identity symbolizes not only the physical transformation of our services, but also our dedication to delivering reliable, flexible and accessible transportation options for all. Twenty twenty-four marked the halfway point for implementing the Reinventing Metro Plan and so much has already been accomplished. As we continue moving forward, we remain dedicated to fulfilling the plan's goals and delivering an exceptional transit experience for our community.
Thank you, Brandy and your team. That was fantastic.
Thank you. I, I'm, I love these videos. I have to say, they're absolutely amazing. Please uh thank all your team that works on this. Uh, they do spectacular job. Uh, I could watch that all day. Um, but I think that we are probably done with this meeting unless anybody has new business. Hearing none, I think we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Okay. Like Senator, Representative, that's how they say.